Hey, good afternoon. I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole meeting for the sixteenth of September, 2025. Is there any late additions or deletions?
Uh, yes, there is just a deletion of pages twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-six. The Finance Department realized there were a few errors in just a couple of the numbers. And the agenda that was posted online, I think corrected, and council has all been and staff have all been getting my corrected copies. So we're deleting on three pages and adding the three corrected pages.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, will somebody please move that the September sixteenth, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting agenda be adopted as amended? Counselor Reed, Counselor Aiken, on favor, carry. Okay, will somebody please move that the June fifth, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes be adopted as presented? Counselor Plan, Counselor Reed, on favor, carry. Any business or... Saying none, we'll go on to report some presentations of staff, permissive tax exemption applications in grand lieu of municipal property tax. Somebody's got it.
So the Committee of the Whole recommends to Council that the eight properties included in the staff report titled "Permissive Tax Exemption Applications" be approved for a grant in lieu of the municipal property tax in the amount of one hundred percent of their 2026 municipal property tax levy. Alternative resolutions? That the Committee of the Whole recommend to Council that the eight properties included in the staff report titled "Permissive Tax Exemption Applications" be approved for a grant in lieu of municipal property tax in the amount of one hundred percent of their 2026 municipal property tax levy. Number two, that the Committee of the Whole recommend to Council that the following properties included in the staff report titled "Permissive Tax Exemption Applications" be approved for a grant in lieu of municipal property tax in the amount of one hundred percent for their twenty-five municipal property tax levy. So the properties are the six-three-three Main Street, two-seventy-two Main Street, one-seventy-eight Mountain View Road, and seven-oh-nine Airport Road. Then the committee, number three, that the Committee of the Whole recommend to Council that the following properties included in the staff report titled "Permissive Tax Exemptions Applications" be approved for a grant in lieu of municipal property tax in the amount of one hundred percent for their twenty-five municipal property tax levy. And the property, they're listed on the background page, number nine of fifty-seven, six-oh-three Main Street, five-seven-seven Main Street, one-one-four-seven Main Street, two-fifty-one Taylor Road, one-one-one-six Main Street, five-sixty Highway Twelve, and two-dash-four-seven-eight Hollywood residence. And that the Committee of the Whole recommend to Council that the following properties included in the staff report titled "Permissive Tax Exemption Applications" be approved for a permissive tax exemption in the amount of one hundred percent of property tax levies for the 2025 tax properties, application properties.
So can I just ask those 2025 properties that you just listed off those workhorse this year, we've already done these, this was the decision last year for this year?
Correct.
Correct, okay, thank you. See, how do I raise that hand? I think you just did.
Did you hear me? Sorry.
I did. Thanks, Pat. Pat's online.
Thank you. Through the mayor, just for some background on this, maybe Pat, you can jump in here as well, but just for some background on this. What our CAO is proposing is every year we get two opportunities, two different types of tax exemptions or tax allowances for different properties. The first one is grand in lieu for municipal taxes, and the second one is a permissive tax exemption, both within a hundred percent. So you can allow people off with a hundred percent of the taxes, but the grand in lieu is for the municipal component only. The permissive tax exemption is for all of your taxes. So the first one is really for taxes that only apply to the municipality. The other one is for all of the different taxes, you can apply either of those depending on what the applications come in for. And these are the applications that we've received and through the post, then just look at this for consideration, the yay or nay or change, what they want to see on it. So happy with what's being proposed on today, these are the ones that we have looked at in the past, that have been passed as well. It's again a copy of what was it last year, there's not many changes to it. And then what we do as we move forward, we make an amendment, we approve the bylaw, it gets advertised in local newspapers, and then it gets back to all act like that's anything left.
That's correct. And if I could just add to that, so seven, there was eight applications for this year for the permissive tax exemption for the 2026 tax year, seven of the eight are actually just renewals. So it's come before council last year and in prior years, and council has provided either a permissive tax exemption or a grant in lieu. And so, and the grant in lieu is a new policy that, of course, council adopted in 2024. So we really only have one new application, and that came in from the Lilwet Elks Lodge. They actually have two properties, and so if council were to consider those, that would be the only one, maybe you might need some clarification. If there's someone, I believe there's a representative maybe in the gallery today, that if there's any questions of council that may want further clarification on their, their application, that would be the only one, the, the one additional application that council may want to have some further discussion, but as I said, the remainder of the applications are just simply renewals.
Thank you, Pat. And just to add to that, so the other taxes come from the SLRD, the hospital, VC has assessment, and school, and policing, and
Municipal finance.
And municipal, right, so if we, if we do the grant in lieu, that is for the municipal portion, but if we do the hundred percent of the, the other two, then we also have to pay that to those other entities, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, that it wasn't something that we could just say that we are forgiving and we just wouldn't collect the money, we also have to pay the other portion out, so, okay.
Yeah, so that would just be distributed amongst the remaining properties of that classification. And I should mention too, there is also two properties, it's similar to last year, that are actually leased by the district of Lilwet. And so they're, they're not in the details because they wouldn't, it's not something council would need to approve, of course, but they, it will be part of the permissive tax exemption bylaw, so those two properties will be added. So there's a small amount for the district leased properties that also would be foregoing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open it up to council. This will be the first, not her one, I mean, that one.
I have two.
Two, okay.
Um, two, three. Um, Lilwet learns, um, written community, last year was their first year applying. I did notice that their assessment actually, out of all of them, all the assessments went up sort of a couple of hundred dollars. Theirs actually jumped by two thousand dollars for some reason. Um, but as they do so well, and as they, last year was their first time, I would like them to continue getting the one hundred percent tax exemption.
For both, the grant in lieu and the hundred percent tax.
The hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the grant in lieu, that's just common, right?
Yeah, just through the mayor, just clarify that as then, them going through with the permissive tax exemption, all the grant in lieu.
Correct.
Just that, I'm finished.
Oh, oh, you have to agree on that one now?
Well, I think we should talk about that one, yeah, before we go on to the next one. Go ahead.
Um, through the mayor, the only thing that I would question is, I think we had a conversation and made it fairly plain that it was for a certain period of time, and then you would start reducing the percentages. And I can't remember if that was on, excuse me, the grant in lieu or on the permissive tax exemption, if somebody could clarify it for me.
I mean, that's
I believe it was on the permissive tax exemption. Pat?
I'm just, I've got the policies here, so I'm just gonna take a quick look and to see if there's one that talks about the reduction of the, the grant over the period of years. You can go ahead while I try to find it if you want.
I know it was discussed that with the hundred percent permissive tax exemption, that we are able to change that and not only just have the one hundred percent, we could do a fifty percent, we could do a seventy-five percent. While the grant in lieu was strictly just for the municipal portion, well, that one could be wiggled as well. And I just remembered that, and also I watched the video and listened to what Joni told us last year.
Okay, so your proposal is for a hundred percent for the grant in lieu and a hundred percent for the permissive, just like we did last year, is that correct?
Well, it's, if it were now it would be, yeah, the one hundred percent permissive tax includes both, both things. The grant in lieu is just the municipal part where the applicant would be paying the other authorities.
Right.
Correct.
Counselor Reed. So through the mayor, I'm just curious, did we put a, a timeframe on that, if you watched the video, we can go back that far. But like, did we say on an annual basis we would reduce it, or did we say for the next three years, this is what you'll get, or?
No, we, we did mention to everybody, because the curling club was going for, just because of that, they were wanting a three-year exemption. And we did tell them that everything would be going by a year-to-year basis. Previously, permissive taxes, I believe, were sort of, they did it, and we did it for a two-year or a three-year or something. But as of last year, it was decided that it would be done on a yearly basis for some of them.
I'm good with that, it's very good. We're way under that one, are you okay with that?
I guess it's a lot different than when I was in council last time, there's, they've changed for almost service clubs there. It seems like they're squeezing up a little bit of personal money there, but I can understand that a number of taxpayers could have, should know the pain that you have to get a bike somewhere, and it's hard to sort of go after these people that provide some needs to the first community that wouldn't have otherwise, so yeah, it's hard, I'd be out of the sense, and rest up for everybody, but I'm not sure what happened in past years.
Well, the Lilwet learns, I'm okay with that one. We have that one, I'm okay with that one, and we have any people like that.
So let's keep that one as it was, that should have led it.
Um, the next one that I saw on the application, let's type it up here, is for the Lilwet Curling Club, and I believe that you're going to speak before we name any.
Oh, Judy.
All right. Uh, good afternoon. I'm here once again to ask for a permissive tax exemption for the Lilwet Memorial Curling Club. Our financial situation is still very precarious. Last year, you suggested that we seek reassessment of our property. Uh, we did, but the assessment branch still considers our building a valuable asset. You also encouraged us to fundraise, and we listened. Together with the Lilwet Sheep Pasture Golf Club, we held a successful event. Uh, the fundraiser kept us afloat, but only barely. Running a curling rink is expensive, just like running a skating rink is. Our season and our ice plant almost didn't start last year. It took a personal loan from a couple of members to pay for repairs. Our hydro bill alone for our curling season is about thirty thousand dollars. We run entirely on volunteer labor, no one is paid. Our volunteer ice maker contributes twelve to sixteen hours a week of the curling season, and many others give, you know, their time weekly. We are truly a nonprofit organization in every sense. If we're forced to pay tax, land taxes, the reality is that we will have to shut down. So why should this matter to you and to our community? Because the Lilwet Curling Club has become more than just a curling rink. We built something unique in BC, we've partnered with both the Lilwet Legion and the Lilwet Seniors. For the seniors, the curling rink is their home base. It's where they play cards, exercise, and gather socially. This social connection supports their health and reduces strain on the medical system. For the Legion, the rink is there in your home as well. They've already made improvements, including adding a heat bump, and they have secured a liquor license. The Legion supports Lilwet Rescue and other first responders, and their presence strengthens our community safety net. And our building is available as an emergency evacuation center, especially valuable for older residents in times of crisis. We also, we're attempting to establish a junior curling program to benefit the youth in our community. So I suggest to you that the value the Lilwet Memorial Curling Club provides is far exceeds what a town would gain in tax revenue. In most communities, curling rinks are owned and operated by the municipalities at full public expense. Lilwet enjoys, hey, now I can turn a page. Let's stick together pretty well. Enjoy the benefit of a curling rink along with a legion hall and a senior center for less than the cost of one municipal employee. But without tax relief, all three groups are at risk of being shut down, and that would leave a tear in the social fabric of Lilwet. On behalf of the curling club, the Legion, and the seniors, I ask you to grant this tax exemption to preserve these essential community spaces and the connections they foster. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May that, may I be allowed to speak? I'm the president of the seniors drop-in center, and if, if we didn't have the move that we made in Jan, in December to the curling club and the Legion, we wouldn't exist. We couldn't afford it, we couldn't afford to stay afloat, and it's through their kindness that they are allowing us to use their facilities. And we have about seventy senior members that use the facilities every day, every weekday. And it's, uh, it's been a real blessing to us. Um, we've managed to keep going, and we are, we have been increasing in number. And I just pray that you do look forward to allowing an exemption. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, basically, Mr. Smith did answer most of my questions. Um, it was if they were going to, if they did contact PC assessment there with the fundraising, it seemed that the fundraising could take a little step up there. Conversation last year was that they could have been getting a permissive tax for the last fifty years. So a few of my questions were answered there. What I was originally going to suggest is, because council has sort of brought it forward, that we do have to slowly get our nonprofits more sustainable and being self-sustainable, was suggesting a ninety-five percent tax exemption. So the club would be then paying about five percent, which would be around about seventeen hundred dollars. Kind of flip-flopping here now, because they did actually follow through with a lot of the suggestions, which I do really appreciate there.
Okay, Counselor Reed.
Um, through the mayor, I have a question for staff, if I could ask our CAO. If it's used as an evac center, do they have any recourse to recoup anything, or does that have to?
Uh, through the mayor, I believe if it's used as an evacuation center or any SS station, you can get the funding for the part of the time. Like, we have an ESS station here, and we have one at the fire hall as well. A, all carefree, we had an evacuation here, you could have used that if it was an evacuation at the time. Then you would only be paid for the period in time that you're used for, you utilize for. It's not like an all-year-round time need to get funding for, you typically only ever get the funding on the event. So it's paid through the MBC, so Emergency Management, British Columbia. If there was an evacuation, God forbid, something like a letting or another community came here, they would get funding for that. Now, would we utilize a curling rink? Absolutely. So I think that, for example, just now, if we had to, if we had events, we had issues here, we need to look into alternative spaces, so we could. But I think you would only be funded for the time period that the funding is allocated for the event itself.
Well, I was more, I was thinking like, if there's heat warnings or whatnot, if there's a lot, there's two seniors in that area, where it would be easier to get to the curling rink than to get to the rec center. So I didn't know if they needed that, that MBC number.
Just to back you on Counselor Reed, there is, I don't want to mention, um, curling rink club has not been used as an emergency center previously. It's just been mentioned that it could be used. If something did happen, do you have the volunteers who would immediately be able to jump in to open it, to stay there, whether it be twenty-four hours or three days, because it is sort of different than not having paid staff or having the actual people to be able to do that as well. It's all, it's all easy to say that, yes, we could do it, but if you don't have the base to do it.
Yes, absolutely, with three organizations running out of that, there's
I thought so, yeah, absolutely.
That is something that we want to look into, I would suggest, a, closer to the time or, or moving forward if it's something that one of the organizations or three of the organizations want to be more involved in. Maybe try and reach out to myself as part of the emergency operations center and some training, because we are, we do. In order for you to stand up an ESS, an EOC, you will need department heads, so logistics, finance, operations, receiving people, and all of these things are very, very procedural. So if that's something we do want to work on together, then I welcome that. We have an organization in town that operates with EOC, emergency operations center, and combines our ESS as well. So the more help we can get on that kind of thing, then the better, as far as I'm concerned. You won't need to be trained to have all.
I really think that curling rink offers a lot of services, and you have done everything that we've asked, I'm good with that hundred percent. Counselor Aiken?
I'm probably gonna go up in here, I think all of these clubs should be a hundred percent, so the value we get from these clubs, I think, part of the sees what, what savings we get from taxes, but that's just mine, my things, because I'm a medical son, I guess.
Counselor, through the mayor.
Um, just to remind everybody to, the exemptions, it's not that they're not getting paid. The, the exemptions are being paid by the properties that are in the same class. So, um, for example, if you have one class that had twenty properties in there, and we gave exemptions to twelve of the other ones, those eight properties would be the ones who are picking up the exemption, not the whole town. So that's sort of the way the economy is going and how businesses and everything else, it's sort of, we're wanting to give. We'd love to give everybody, but then it's also for some of the, a burden on some of the other properties who will be picking up the tax exemption, so it's kind of a bit of a balancing act to not screw everybody over.
Counselor. Through the mayor, I'm okay with a hundred percent for them, mainly because the Legion is there. And I'm pretty sure if the Legion put an application, yeah, if they were getting a tax exemption, they would get a hundred percent. So, and I know both them and the seniors and the curling rink are all trying to get reestablished, let's say, so I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with the hundred percent as well, I was very happy to hear that the seniors society was in on the rec center. And I am gonna say, I, I'm very, very pleasantly surprised that sort of the little suggestions, or I was kind of thinking, are they actually gonna follow through in some of these? Yeah, so I'm good with the hundred percent.
Okay, we're good with the hundred percent, because
we heard that, Counselor Aiken.
Um, through the mayor, I'm just curious about this, uh, cost being shared among the classes, like, because the churches, they're all churches. There's not gonna be anybody left, like, who's left to pick up the cap there, like, is that sort of normal practice? Do there's, are there other classes, or is there a way to change it, it's a whole community?
Through the mayor, Pat, do you have any suggestions or no question, Pat?
Thank you, through the worship, through the mayor. I, I just wanted to clarify that when municipal taxation is set, mill rates are set based on the total assessment. So if there's a property that have been exempted, that, that just means in that class that there's less assessment to tax. So it, the, the taxation gets spread amongst all of the, the, the different classifications. So it's not, I just, I want to clarify just that if there was an exemption in a certain class, that doesn't mean that the rest of the, the properties in that classification have to pick up that difference, because it's a total assessment. So based on the total municipal assessment, there's different classifications. So there's a residential, there's utilities, businesses, and industry, like, we sent that email out to council earlier, was it yesterday? And so then, what happens is you, you set a mill rate for, usually typically, it'll be a residential tax rate. And then from there, then the other classifications, especially for the other taxing authorities, it's a multiple. So it, it could be for businesses, it's typically, like, the province would set a rate of two-point-four-five to one. So whatever the residential rate is set at, businesses would pay two-point-four-five, multiple of that rate. Um, industry typically, in the, from when I was doing taxation, would be, I believe it'd be about three-point-four to one. So, um, that's how the, that's how the tax rates are established, and that's how the, the taxes are collected. So it's based on assessment, total assessment, so if there's exemptions, and there will be exemptions, because churches, for example, have a statutory exemption. They don't have to apply, and the building and the land that that building on is statutory exemption. Same as municipal properties, those are all statutory exemptions. So it's the remaining of the assessment value that determines what the mill rates will be for each one of the classes. Will that clarify that?
Yeah, that's, that's good clarity, good Lord, anyway. I just have one question, so when you're talking about the churches having that statutory, but it would just be for the land that the church is on, right? So if there's an extra piece of that, if there's a house on there or an extra piece, then that part would still come, correct?
That's correct, so the churches that apply for the permissive tax exemption, it's for the land or other buildings that might be surrounding that church and the land that the church that might be surrounding that, uh, church and the land that the churches and what.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor. So would council like to run through individually, because we've done sixty-three, would you like to run any conversations on two seven two? I'll just start with the, the P T, you know, permissive tax exemption properties. Two thousand and two main street has a, for.
Rescue?
Yep.
The Rescue Society? I have no problem with, with doing status quo as, as we did last year. Actually, the only properties I want to talk about are Lola Elks. So I don't know how everybody feels about that, but we can go through one at a time. Rescue Society? One hundred percent. Hundred?
Yeah.
We know seven is. Oh, we're good, okay, yeah, same. Okay, and East Lilowatt Recreation Society? Uh, that is, uh, obviously East Lilowatt, that is the gun range. Motorcar track, I'm good with a hundred percent with that. Councilor plant?
Is there anybody from the East Rock Society here? I was just, multiple hats.
I'm wearing three hats today.
No, I was just interested, um, last year we were talking about the, um, they look into the grants for staging area again for emergencies, then we're talking about livestock because that has been done in the past there. Was that looked into, do you know? There's something for that?
The property there is always open. If there's an emergency, the property is always open to anyone that needs to use it, to need, that needs to store livestock there or to come and bring your motorhome camper or whatever you need to come and stay there.
Yeah, yeah, I was just asking if they had, if you'd looked into see if there were any grants that would help you in, in those emergency cases as well.
I don't think we've looked in for grants, uh, to be honest with you, I don't think we really need any. We, we seem to do quite good on our own, we do survive.
I'm gonna go to see a little bit more.
Thank you, through the, thank you, through the mayor. For council plans, any question, I was talking to Taylor earlier on, I was talking to Taylor earlier on today as well about the applications as well and how to best work with the municipalities to see if there's any grants upcoming, and she has reached out a couple of times on some potential grants for us, but typical, the way the grants are nowadays, if we can apply for it, we can get it, we can help them. If they apply for it, we're kind of playing against each other. So Taylor and I are actually working on a couple of grant opportunities moving forward to follow with properties. So our naive discussions as early as today as well, just essential information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
I think so, what's the third hat you're wearing? Because I'll go there next. Okay, uh, so we agree with a hundred percent.
Councilor, okay with P T E?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's for East Lowland?
Uh, yes. Okay, so we have the Seventh Day Adventist Church, United Church of Canada, and, uh, the Roman Catholic Bishop Church that we did the municipal, I believe, only last year. That crack pack, yes? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So status quo or? Yes, status quo.
Yes.
Status quo. I'll always status quo too, so you're all part of this. Okay. Off the easy. And the same, and then the last one is the Lilowatt Elks property. Would you care to speak to that or?
I'll let, I'll let Grant start.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I would like to know. By the way, thank you very, very much for worship, council staff. My name is Grant Lawyers, just looking here. I'm one of the directors of, uh, in Elks Lodge, blessing is a treasure.
I, I got touched, yes. Thank you, they now may have been a treasure. I didn't know, I didn't know what I was getting into. Uh, it's basically resurrecting the Lilowatt Elks from the ashes, the mice and the rats. Because when the first, we were in there, it wasn't, I don't think I would have gone near it. They literally had to put in rat poison and mice poison. It was people lighting fires underneath the stairs to stay warm. They had to close that off to make the place so it wasn't a fire hazard. Um, the place was vacant for five years. And before that, the building was resurrected, I believe nineteen seventy-two. And repairs and maintenance had been piece by piece, you'd say. You know, it wasn't, and, and, you know, as, uh, that one time, the Elks was a very vibrant organization in Lilowatt. The rentals before COVID, uh, were in the sixty thousand dollars a year of commercial leases and they paid all that money back to the community. And they did like the parades and they did events in town for the Easter parade, they did Christmas dinners, things like that. We're still trying to, first off, we have a temporary water line right now. It's good until the first frost. Uh, since Easter weekend, we've been dealing with leaks, you go into the hall, it comes from the sun, it comes from that side. Uh, the roof has been repaired, it's not in bad shape. To date, we haven't been able to real, to realize too much of the revenues that we even put into our budget because we don't have washrooms that are functional. We've got grants, uh, at this, when I submitted this, we had grants of twenty-three thousand dollars fifty-five. We've now got grants of twenty-two thousand, oh, sorry, twenty-five thousand because we've got a grant to actually fix washrooms so we can have bathrooms in the place. Pretty hard to hold to function when you don't have working bathrooms. Uh, our projections of fifteen thousand dollar loss for the year are pretty much right on. They left us with a bank account of ten thousand dollars that was held in a gaming account that hadn't been used for about ten years, so the Elks allowed us to use that. We had no assistance whatsoever in Elks, Canada. We're actually out of trusteeship now, we were under a trusteeship and they kind of had their thumb on us and we, we actually worked our way out of the trusteeship, so that ended like in August. So now we can actually, people are feeling a little bit better, they can actually move forward. But we're still working, trying to get the building front clean and getting it so it's presentable. So we're pretty much on target for the fifteen thousand dollar loss for this year. And there's not, and like we haven't realized the revenue for August to September. We got, I think we realized about five hundred dollars worth of revenue for October without the washrooms. That, we're, we're working on that, hopefully the washrooms will be resolved by, by the end of October, beginning of November. But that's more grants, but we're also working with the hub because they want to use our facility for seniors drop-in programs to enhance what the curling club and Legion are doing because we're, we're missing about fifty-six percent of our population is seniors from the age, or from fifty, fifty years old to seventy-five. Whereas the, whereas the seniors drop-in center is more servicing people that are seventy to eighty-five. And some of those activities don't have enough for the younger people. We've attracted about twelve new people in the exercise program, but they're getting a little bit tired of using only the same three YouTube videos. We want to be doing programs for more active seniors and utilizing the hall, so.
So we've got a membership of about thirty-one people right now, signed up. Um, we looked at our financial statements, you know where we're sitting and that. But we do have some assets. We do own two pieces of property there. And the long-term goal of the Elks for and now is to look at seniors housing on one of those blocks of property. So hopefully somewhere in the, sometime in the future, we'll be coming back to talk to you and maybe find to do some kind of a partnership on that between yourself and the B C Housing or something along those lines for seniors housing there. It's an ideal situation, it's an ideal place for that to take place. That's one of our goals. One way or the other, the Elks are gonna survive. Right now, the Elks are, the B P O Elks exists. The Elks also have a provincial society that's attached and subservient to them. We are looking at applying for charity status for that so we can issue tax exemptions. That's gonna take a bit of time. I'm working on that. We're also working on a re, rewriting our bylaws and that to clarify them so we can, so an ascending scale on where these things go. And we won't run into the same problems that we had previously when the Elks died and the property sort of sat in limbo for a while. We'll be, be, be very clear on how that piece of property, those pieces of property are going to move forth if the Elks happen to go down again to the society. So that property will stay here in Lilowatt, owned in Lilowatt. So we're looking at all of these trying things and trying to clear up a whole bunch of stuff that was laid on us, you know, for history. But it's looking good, we're hanging in there. Um, if you talk to other people from B C, from B C Elks and such, we're like a phoenix literally coming up from nothing because other Elks lodges are not going anywhere, they're going in the opposite direction. We're going the opposite direction, so. Coming along, we think we can make this thing work. But we're here to meet some goal.
And I forgot to mention that we also support the Lilowatt Rock and Gem Club. They are, they are, have their equipment up at our facility and they're going to be creating, um, buying some new equipment so that they can offer workshops to the public and, uh, so that downstairs space will be mutually beneficial for them as well as other activities.
Um, earlier this year, C A O, Joe and I met with, um, the Elks of B C. They came to Lilowatt and at that time they had one member. And that weekend, they were trying to get to more members and I think they, they said that they was gonna go up to eight members. So I'm really pleased that it's going up to thirty-one members. I think that the Elks have always given back to this community. Um, and I know that the last couple of years, they haven't, they've missed applying for this exemption. So you paid full price, uh, in tax.
And it's paid by a member because we did, we didn't have the bank, we banked a bunch for it.
Yeah.
It's still, it's, there's still some significant cables.
I applaud you for, for trying to bring this and resurrect the Elks because I think it's a very needed, uh, building in society. And, uh, we look forward to working with you on whatever projects. I would love to hear what projects you have and work towards. So for me, I'm a hundred percent on both. Councilor Weave?
I'm good with a hundred percent on both. Um, like I say, through the years, they've always given back. And I know there's a lot of people in town that are missing a lot of events that used to be taken care of by the Elks and nobody's picked up that ball.
So bingo, but not a thing yet, but.
We may even try to.
Everything is broken, everything is broken, so everything needs to be fixed. You know, it's based on, we're applying for grants to fix stuff because we don't have it, so.
Just a lighthearted comment on the bingo. I'm actually reading a book where they started having bingo at council meetings so that they got more people there.
We would like to do bingo, but everything is broken.
Yeah, so we'll see where it goes.
Councilor plant? Hundred percent?
Um, I'm not sure I'm having a conflict, because I haven't helped you out, but someone.
He's not a member.
You're not a member yet.
But we, we have, we have greatly appreciated the service for fixing stuff.
And Frank and I have talked over past.
Yeah, I can see what they're up against there, and I'm totally in favor. So, um, thank you.
I think we're good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
A hundred percent. I've been going, hey.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. So. Can we just, uh, do we need a louver and a secondar for this? Yes, so would somebody please move that the committee of the hall recommend to council that the eight properties included in the staff report titled permissive tax exemption applications be approved for the grant in lieu of municipal property tax in the amount of? Uh, go ahead, just before I read it out, go ahead.
Uh, just instead of the, the recommendation on this page, because you decided to do some permissive tax ones and some granted lieu.
Okay.
Um, it'll be the third alternative.
It'll be the third one? Okay, so be approved for?
It'll be a hundred percent for both. And for the first, like this, the grant in lieu missed property, that'll, that'll be the three churches. And then the list properties for the hundred percent permissive tax exemption will be everybody else. Correct?
Crack pack?
That's, that's, I agree that it has to be a different resolution, it can't be a hundred percent, uh, property tax exemption because you did say that some were just for municipal portion only. So that would be the grant and the, so Christine is correct, they would need, you'd need to identify which properties are the permissive task exemptions and which properties are the grant and the, um, approved.
It's, yes, it's just the churches. I just didn't help working that out. So I got to there, be approved. So I got, uh, be approved for, uh, a grant in lieu of municipal property tax in the amount of?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Oh, this will be twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, there are twenty twenty-six municipal property tax levy. Am I reading these?
Yes, yeah.
Six oh three Main Street, five seven seven Main Street, and one 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 six Main Street. And that the committee of the hall recommends council that all properties included in the staff report titled permissive tax exempt, applications be approved for permissive tax exemption in the amount of hundred percent of the property tax levies for the twenty twenty-five chapter.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. Okay. Councilor Plant? And second, Councilor Aiken, all in favor? Very. This is now, actually. Okay, what's our time? Ten to five. Pass.
So I just, I just wanted to make a comment to ca, to the committee of the hall that those recommendations will go to the next council meeting and then we'll present the bylaw at that time, and then there's the advertising that follows and then the council can adopt the bylaw following that. That's the.
Okay, ask me, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Where are you going? What?
Do you have anything else?
No, not really. Fine, okay, uh. I'm back at the gun, boy. All right, so I don't know if we can go on to the animal control. Will we have time?
Okay, take twelve minutes.
I only have two questions.
Oh, good Lord, there you go. Okay, let's go with, I don't know if we can get this in. It runs for a lot of words, but six point two, animal control bylaw, twenty twenty-five, zero twenty-seven, unrelated amendments, uh, discussion, okay. I think we are all good, Councilor Plant?
Okay, through the mayor. Um, I noticed that the number of dogs a person can have was increased from three to five. I'm just wanting to know the reason behind that decision.
Yeah, I'm gonna stand up, just let it keep you to here. So the, the previous version of the bylaw said you could have up to three dogs just with a regular license. And if you had four or five dogs, you had to get an extra kennel permit. So you still could have up to five dogs, um, but you needed to get a separate kennel permit if you had more than three. The district has barely used kennel permits. Um, I asked Megan to run how many we found or issued in the last ten years and it was only two. So I just thought, let's just get rid of kennel permits. So now you can still have up to five dogs, they all have to be licensed, but you don't need to get a separate kennel permit if you have four or five dogs. That said, if you are breeding dogs for a business or you're doing a daycare or boarding, you still have to get a business license for that. Yeah, that's the reason for that, that change.
And then I have, um, in sections forty-five and fifty-one, and I know I'm overthinking this, um, but I have a really hard time with the wording for.
um, but I have a really hard time with the wording for, for plots over two hectares, unlimited animals. Um, I just feel we should be really cautious with that wording, where, um, capping it or changing the wording so someone is not going right up to the threshold of compliance, which really wouldn't be healthy for the animals. Are we able to change that to something like suitable to the land capacity or whatever? Because, yeah. Your size, if you can fit unlimited animals on there. I just don't like the word unlimited. And as I said, I'm overthinking this.
So one point nine nine hectares is a hundred?
Yeah, and then over two hectares is unlimited animals.
You have suggestion?
Well, I'm just wondering, is there some, just?
Hundred fifty or?
Well, suitable to the land capacity, because if there's gotta be, because when, when you're looking into, for example, the people who do puppy mills and stuff like that, they have so many animals put into a small area. Um, I don't know, I just don't like the word unlimited.
So if one point nine nine or two is a hundred, are you saying per hectare would be a hundred animals, and that would be, uh, so if they had ten hectares, they're gonna allow thousand?
Just unlimited. I don't like that word.
Great. So, I'm looking at, like, what, what, you have a suggestion? That's too.
I, I, I don't have a suggestion as to a number, because it says over two hectares, so it could be two hectares, it could be three hectares.
Right.
You can't really assign a number to that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If, if two hectares is a hundred, so do you just wanna do for every actor you have, you can have an extra hundred, or, I don't know. Go ahead.
Good, the mayor, I, I don't mind, like, if you say suitable to the land capacity, it just becomes a bit hard to interpret and enforce. Like, if somebody made a complaint, well, you know, there, somebody had a four hectare property and they had, I don't know, two hundred chickens or something. Uh, I don't know, it becomes like, then the bylaw officer is supposed to be interpreting like how much land capacity their property has?
Well, I don't know, I was just, that's the only thing I could throw. It was just the unlimited was.
I wonder if, like, does, does no limit have a different connotation than unlimited?
Hmm.
I mean, same here.
I think no limit's worse than unlimited.
I can continue. Uh, the mayor just said, but this is something that'd be more or less sort of self-regulating, that, that people, that, well, first of all, if you have a farm business, you're not limited by these numbers anyway. And if somebody had, like, large numbers of animals, you know, if it's a nuisance to somebody in terms of noise or smell, that can still be enforced with the nuisance by law. Um, trying to think of, I don't know, I don't, I don't anticipate us passing pretty, passing the bylaw and then people loading their properties with animals. I think if they already, I don't know, I just, I'm not sure if this is a problem that's going to exist. And if there are concerns with cruelty or, like, packing of animals in, somebody can always make a complaint to the B C S P C A, and they have animal protection officers that can investigate, so that realm is always open to anyone in the public or, you know, staff or.
That's okay.
Um, to the mayor, I'm just curious, like, how many properties are, are district, are over two hectares? It seems like a pretty large piece of property that is maybe in Lilwet, but anything in town is, I mean, it's close to that, right?
To the mayor, when you have a number off the top of my head, but, um, it'll probably be fewer than fifteen. Yeah, East Lilwet for sure, and there's probably a couple kind of north. All that. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't understand hectares. What's that in acres?
Oh, point five is one point two hectares.
Four point six.
Point five was two.
One point five. Point five hectares is one point two acres, at least.
So like five acres.
Uh, two, two and a half.
Oh, two and a half.
Two and a half acres, correct.
Add, right, sure.
Yeah, four point nine acres.
Falsified though.
Is there any topic that you wanted to speak to?
Uh, I just want people to keep their dogs in their yard and not let them run around, and people, they're supposed to license their dog. What are they getting for getting no license? If, if we phone the bylaw guy and he says, is it being oppressive? And you say, no, then he goes, okay. So we're not doing anything. So what's going to encourage people to license their dog? Right. They, they're now using Facebook to get dogs home when someone loses the dog, so that's not the bylaw person anymore. Um, so why are we licensing our dogs? I think that's a great idea. I've always licensed my dog, but if nobody's gonna for, enforce anything, then what's the reasoning behind it? And I just want people to have fences, keep their dogs in their yard, and that. Just, there's a lot of aggressive dogs, and they get it out, and you phone them, and they say, yeah, sorry, yeah, never gets out. And I'm like, yeah, it's been eight years, I haven't seen it. So nobody's enforcing anything, but I don't even know what there is that they're supposed to be enforcing. Like.
Fair enough. Okay.
Thank you. We're gonna change through this here. Uh, in regards to, what do you have your license? If a dog is unlicensed and seen, I know that we've had to, we've had, we have had dogs taken to gamboons. We have had dogs taken out of the community. I have personally been involved in two separate occasions where a guess of dogs have been placed on the, a guess of dogs list. Uh, we have put specific fines in place, citations in place, people helping find. Uh, I know that personally, because I'm the person that does it with a bylaw, so or bylaws are passing over and over the occasions, and if your dogs are unregistered, they're unlicensed. Uh, we have issued fines, and we have also, uh, taken dogs away.
Okay, good, because I have people asking me all the time.
They're like, Nathan, tall, take my cell number.
Yeah.
One hundred percent, let me know, and I will personally speak to it. Uh, I know that there was an incident up in the hop farm recently, again, uh, and we are looking into it. They'll receive the complaints in writing. It's difficult to try and deal with it, and a lot of people don't want to write it down and give us the complaint, but they're very happy to moan about it to Morris. That's not a complaint. You know, if you want to send any interviews to Morris and complain about it, that's fine. If you want something done about it, give us it right, and we'll address it. That's all. A bylaw needs absolutely both of it, and we will, we will look at it.
Well, that's good. I didn't know when I asked people when they say, why should I license my dog?
Give them my cell number.
Okay.
And just for the record, if somebody does complain, is that confidential or not?
One hundred percent.
Okay.
Fair, okay.
Okay.
Good. So thank you through the mayor. Just to jump back onto the other one, no, I'll have two minutes. Trying to come up with something else, like a, a humane animal, a reasonable humane animal number, or I'm trying to come up with a better phrase rather than a ninety, because I hear the consent. Uh, I, I also hear a lot of deputy court ops are saying about, if there was an issue, we could just go to, you know, the, the standards, uh, for humane animals, but, uh, can we maybe just come back to this just after council, because it doesn't look like a heavy council agenda tonight? Maybe just come back to it, so I can try and come up with a better ideology for it. Just give us a little bit of time to look at it. So you hear what council are saying about, maybe maybe we could just walk this next term.
Yeah, what was your second question?
That was it?
That was it?
The first one was the, uh, number dogs.
You ready?
To the mayor, I just needed some clarification. Um.
Hey, Jaylen.
I am on page thirty-one, just number four of the changes. When it says thirty backyard hens, but only two turkeys or ducks, does that mean along with the thirty hens? Or in place of?
Uh, the mayor, so that was an example, just by the table, where, I mean, council can decide otherwise if you want to let people in, say, like, there were some at a time. Should we postpone this discussion for later on in the meeting?
Good, thanks. I just wanted to.
Okay, all right. Uh, then, uh, uh, will somebody please move that the committee of the whole recommended giving second reading, uh, to the proposed animal controlled bylaw and related amendments at the next regular council meeting, which is coming up here?
I think we can hold off.
Or we can just make a pause on it, do you think?
I think, so I don't think we need to have this motion. This was just if we had time to complete the discussion.
To the mayor, if we can, if we can form the whole, like, the upper management, I mean.
But it's already in the council meeting. That's a little confusing, because it's already in the council meeting, but with the paperwork here. So why don't I just, uh, can we just have somebody move that we, uh, move this to the council meeting at five o'clock? Sure. Counselor Reed, uh, Counselor Plann, all in favor? Carrie. Uh, any notice of motion? No. Will somebody please move that the September sixteenth committee at the whole meeting be adjourned? Counselor Blan, Counselor Aiken, all in favor? Carrie. They're good. Five minutes, break.
That's, that was.
Thank you.
Which? Thank Bob. A.